They're looking to see what they could do due to the fact that right now, um, a lot of things are up in the air. Uh, they're doing, been doing a great job at the golf course, but of course, right now, along with a lot of other people with this COVID-19, um, when they're going to be able to be open this year, what they're going to be able to do, uh, is up in the air. Um, and they'd like to have an extension of this time to allow them to plan, keep planning this year and keep, um, pushing forward. And I know that they have already, um, been granted an extension or waiver of their payments with the EDA this year. Um, so that'll get put on to the end of the final year. Um, so there'll be, uh, been afforded that this year. They have been, uh, reaching out to, um, their lease companies, um, and others to see what they could do this year, especially when we, none of us know when we're going to be allowed to go back to normal life. Um, and what I'd like to do is have a discussion on this. Uh, I myself, um, would like to see us do an extension on this. I think it's probably the best thing to do for them to keep this viable, keep it moving forward. Uh, I know that, um, Chad and Jeff and the rest of the board, um, have made great strides out there. Um, have made sure that the golf course is looking really good from where they came from five years ago. Um, they'll, talking with Chad, they've had some good compliments from their, uh, the public and from their, uh, stockholders, shareholders. And, um, but like maybe Jeff or Chad, uh, to make some comments, then I'll go to the council and the mayor. Chad, do you want to say something, please, sir?
Sure. Um, first things first is, uh, we just want to say how much we appreciate the effort and support that the city provided, um, the Valley Golf Course, um, five years ago. And, um, we have done due diligence and have tried to utilize, um, that abatement in the best way possible. Primarily that abatement, um, it's received in the later portion of the year. So what it provides to us is just basically stability and the amount of money we're talking about, um, some folks may look at that, say, well, that seems small, but it's not. Um, the size of that money is, you know, relatively speaking is, you know, it could be anything related to fertilizer or enhancements to the course itself, which drives our membership base and customers coming over to the east side and choosing to golf at Valley Golf Course. Or it could be anything associated with trying to reduce the debt load, which is the two primary things that the board focuses on. So that's been a huge boon to us. Um, and like I said, we, we appreciate that very greatly. Um, we know there's, uh, a lot of people dealing with, uh, the COVID. It's impacted everybody. And to that extent, um, we wanted to make sure that as a board and an organization and that we were planning and doing all the things that we needed to do and getting that upfront. So appreciate the opportunity to discuss this, answer questions, and hopefully to have the opportunity to continue the abatement.
Thanks. Thanks, Chad. Uh, one thing I'd like to do, they, um, talked about too, that with American Federal, I think you're ending in 2023, um, with the payments there. And I think, you know, with my thought process and, and, you know, I know we're looking at, um, put forth in front of you a five-year, but maybe lining it up with the American Federal so everything going forward after that would line up and that they would be able to move forward and, um, start the normal property tax after that. Uh, I think that'd be my recommendation. Um, and, um, I'll move to, uh, the rest of the council and the mayor if you want to say anything.
I would, uh, I'd encourage that we support this effort. Um, and I do appreciate, just to go back to the comments already made, um, you have taken what benefit you've had up to this point and you've put it to really good use. Um, the condition of the golf course is getting better. Um, the condition of you, uh, in terms of your financial stability is getting better. And so you've acted in a very responsible way. And here you come before us, not with a demand or, or in some way saying, we have to do this, but only as a request to, you know, proactively, you guys are looking at, how do we replace the revenue that we could lose for this coming golf season? So rather than get caught on the back end of this and say, well, gee, we, we didn't have the revenue we expected, you're coming in on the front end of it, again, in a very proactive way and trying to get this thing set up before it gets, um, let's say financially uncomfortable, if this is a, a tough golf season because of COVID. And so for, for my part of it, the, the hardship that could come in the next year is not of your doing. And that's just the case for every one of our businesses, every one of our families. We're saying, you know, we, we didn't see this coming. Nobody could have seen it coming. So now in that environment, how do we, how do we keep the ship afloat until days get good again? So I would speak in favor of this to help the golf course get over the hump and keep providing that top level service that they have been doing here in recent years.
Thank you, Mayor. Any of the council members have any comments or questions? Just let me know.
Uh, word two.
What was that?
Word two. Dale, this is Dale.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just have a question. What, uh, effect does this have on the city as far as, uh, uh, dollar wise? I mean, are we?
Sure. I can tell you what, uh, from 2016 to 2019, what the dollar amounts were. In 2016, it was $10,557. Uh, '17, it was $10,00623. '18 was $6,874. And 2019, it was $6,751.
Okay. So who, who actually owns the golf course? Is it a city operation or is it, or is it not? I don't?
Actually, the, um, golf course has an agreement, lease agreement with us for the land, um, which the golf course, the golf holes sit on. The actually clubhouse is actually owned by the Valley Golf. I think it's a foundation, um, owns that. Uh, we have no part in the, where the clubhouse sits. It's just where the holes are. They have a lease with us at the beginning. I think it was a 99-year lease. Um, so that's how that's set up, sir?
Okay. Um, I guess I, you know, just in this, these days we're dealing with now, I, I could, uh, I could agree with the three-year thing also. Uh, I, I think we need to make a point though, that it would probably be the last time we would do it.
Good point. Anything else, sir? Dale?
No, that's it from me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
I've got a couple of things if.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. Um, in the RCA, it says that the city received financials.
We have those, sir.
Can we get a copy of those?
Um, if you want to talk to Mr. Gordy and, uh, go to his office and look at those because those are, would be beneficial to see those in there instead of having those floating around, sir. But we have received ones. I think the last one was in January of this year. If I'm correct, Mr. Gordy?
That is correct. Okay. And they were turning in January, not August? These are for, these are for '19?
We have, uh, financials for all four years.
Okay. Um, now, I don't see, I don't have any interest in creating an indefinite subsidy for, uh, for anyone, actually, uh, whether it's any private business. Um, I, if I'm not mistaken, I think the current, um, the current, uh, action has a payment that, or a deferment through May of next year. So they wouldn't have any tax payment coming up right now, I, I don't believe.
This is, this, this year's the last year on it. So we're being, they're being proactive and coming toward us to do this, sir?
Right. So they wouldn't pay in May and they wouldn't pay in October. So their next payment would be May 15th of 2021?
Right.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, they have to pay their taxes. And after they pay their taxes, they notify me that they have paid their taxes. I contact the county for verification. The county gives me a list for each of the five properties as to the amount of taxes that have been paid on each property. We then prepare, uh, a, a payment to go to them to reimburse them for the payments that they have made. So they will be paying property taxes whenever property taxes are due this year, but they will, uh, based upon the current agreement that we have, they will be getting those, the city portion of those taxes refunded to them.
For both the May and the October payment? And then in 2021, the May payment would not be returned under the current agreement?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. I guess what, you know, we've talked about doing for all the businesses in the city. We've basically written a resolution in, in support of a 60-day deferment for businesses in East Grand Forks. Um, I think that's fair under the light of COVID. Um, I think it's, it's almost comical to ask for a five-year abatement, um, under the guise of COVID. I, it's, uh, a little bit opportunistic, I believe. Um, I have, I don't think we have any evidence that this thing will ever end if we keep going. So I'm not in support of putting any further abatement on.
Anything else, Mr. Demers? See none. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
So they're, I do. They're asking for what, a three-year abatement?
Actually, it's in front of you. It's a five-year abatement, but I'm recommending the three-year.
I agree with that.
This is Clarence.
Clarence.
Thank you. Uh, if I remember right, when we granted the first five-year abatement, the five years was supposed to tie to one of their loans was coming, would be completed in 2021. And so therefore with the five-year abatement, they could pay that loan off and that loan would be off their books. And then they could start making property tax payments again. That was the guise that they gave us when we approved the first five-year abatement. Have, has that loan been paid off? Have you refinanced it now, Mr. Frost? Or is that not the scenario anymore?
Yeah. Sorry, I had to take the mute off. I'm not sure. I was not the president at the time of the negotiation and I don't have any documentation that, specifically it was primarily to pay off a loan. Um, but from the time I've been the president, last two years, um, we've had two loans, one for the EDA and one for American Federal. And the American Federal is due to be completed 2023, and I believe the EDA is 20, 2027, not including the year pushing out that we were having with, um, alleviating the payments for this year and moving it to the end of the loan again.
Okay. So with that in mind, I, I'm not in favor of an additional abatement. The most that I would go would be one year. And, and that, I mean, there's enough incentive programs out there and that, that the golf course could be applying for, for this year if it's under the guise of, of the COVID-19. Uh, I have every confidence that our governor's going to come to a census and put us all back to work May 1st. So the golf course will be open and be able to go. Uh, and you won't have any problems this year at all. So I'm not in favor of an additional abatement for, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Who's that?
Chad.
Chad. Mr. Grassill, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so, I mean, I can go with the three-year. Um, and, and part of my logic is thinking if, if they end up turning that thing over to us, we don't have a way to even run or even the manpower or the equipment to run a golf course if that thing comes back to the city. So then it either turns into one of, uh, a grassland environmental center or something to that effect because there's no way right now we can turn around and run that thing. And I know that, so we're looking at a three-year tax abatement if you take that average of about $7,000. So that probably would be around $21,000. If, if you look at that over that three-year period, um, it's going to cost us a lot more than $27,000 to run a golf course. So I'm, I'm in favor of the three-year abatement. I have no problem with that.
I guess, and just a comment, they're not going to pay taxes this year under the current agreement. So, so nothing, nothing changes this year, no matter what we do. So I guess I don't see what the urgency is here. Um, I would say maybe come back next year before it's going to expire and see where we're at. Um, I guess my, the other fear I have is, you know, if we're, if this is done under the guise of COVID-19, uh, kind of, uh, help relief, are we going to be offering this same type of relief to every other business that we have in town that doesn't want to, or can't pay taxes because, because of, you know, their restaurant is closed or, or whatever? I, I don't think we can afford that. So, and I don't, if we set this as a precedent and this is what we're doing, I, I, if I was Boardwalk or Blue Moose, I would come down here and ask for the same thing. And I, I don't think that's the type of, uh, type of situation that we can offer.
I think throughout the history of Valley Golf, it has served as a public golf course that is in a way unique from another business. It really is a, a community service that they provide. We know they provide it with a ton of volunteers on their board and, and really never any extra, extra money. And, and so we've looked at the good that they bring to our community, the compliment that they are to all the other features that we have here. Um, you know that we've done a very creative land lease for them. Their annual cost for all the land is how much?
I think it was $10 per year.
So it's, it's nominal. And, and all of this is to say, we want them here. We want them to put out a good product. And we know that this is the kind of thing that we have to do to make sure that that happens.
And your comments could be repeated about every single business in East Grand Forks. Every single one of them adds more benefit than they pay in taxes. Uh, you know, I guess my point is, is if it's, if it truly is, uh, a necessary thing that we have this business, if it isn't going to be profitable, if it can't, or not even profitable, if it can't make it work, either the city should own it and run it, or it should just not exist.
I think the point is, it has been profitable, at least in a, in a very small margin of profit. It's been at least sustainable here in the last several years until you come along with a year like this where revenues will be way down. Um, the governor is still deciding if you can even golf in Minnesota, or if you can, maybe you, one person per golf cart, not living in a family. It's not going to be a normal year and it will take them several years to recover.
I'm not usually on Mr. Vetter's side, but, uh, I'm also looking at a one-year. Uh, using Chad's reasoning, they're going to fail whether we do a one, two, or three. So I'd say a one-year would be appropriate now and let's see what happens.
Anybody else have any comments on this? Right now I have it moving forward with a three-year.
See if there's a motion?
Next week we'll take a look at it. Chad, do you have it? Frost, do you have anything? Jeff, do you have anything else?
Sorry, gentlemen. We, we got kicked out of the, the meeting. We missed about the last four minutes. I apologize.
Let's move it.
Right now, Chad, we're gonna, looking at moving ahead tomorrow, next week for a vote of a three-year. Um, there has been, uh, brought up that maybe a one-year would be suffice by Mr. Riappel and Mr. Vetter. I don't know if you heard those comments. Um, but.
Can I just ask you? So are you talking about a one-year on top of, right now? So a one-year effective '21 for the year of 2021?
Yes.
So in other words, what we already have?
No, we want a one-year.
No, we don't have a one-year.
21 taxes. We have 2020, so it extended 2021.
Okay. Well, that'll be part of the conversation next week, I guess.
Anybody else have anything? Are you or none? Thank you, Mr. Frost and Jeff for meeting on the call. Move on to number two. Consider.
President, also this Brian Lord speaking.
Right. Thank you.
Number two, consider awarding annual sewer cleaning job, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so in 2011, the city council put in place a preventative maintenance program by which the city would clean a fifth of the city sanitary sewer system each year on an ongoing basis. Uh, this, this year we're scheduled to clean the southeast end of, uh, town, east of Biglin Road and troubled areas. We'd like to televise all these areas, uh, like we did last year. Uh, we haven't televised them since sometime right after the flood. The little bit this year came in from Johnson Jetline, Inc. We've used them before. They were a good reputable company. Um, so I'm asking for permission to award the job to Johnson Jetline for $64,295.12. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl? If you have to be off the call, don't put us on mute, please, because we hear music. I would appreciate that. I hear nothing, Mr. Stordahl. So move on to number three, request to purchase compact loader. Reed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, included in the budget for 2020 is $110,000 allocated for a compact loader for the Parks Department. Uh, throughout the winter, we took some time, our Parks Department did, and, and worked with both RDO equipment and True North equipment to see, uh, some loaders that are similar to the ones that we've been looking at in our area and seeing action and snow removal. Yeah, I still hear you in my ear.
Yep. Go ahead.
Yep. Thanks. Sorry. Had somebody said in my ear, I've been kicked out of the conference. Uh, so ultimately, we looked at a couple of different loaders and settled on this 244s being one that we feel comfortable with. It would be the right size to be able to clean snow from our trail system as well as for our parking lots and have a lot of functionality for us. Uh, so I have two quotes or two prices. Both of the prices that I have for the base equipment, the machine itself are from the Sourcewell contract, uh, state purchasing contract. So the base equipment price is the same for each piece of equipment. And then the prices vary a little bit with some of the accessories that are priced locally at each store. Um, ultimately, what we ended up with is I'm suggesting a price, uh, from RDO equipment for the John Deere 244 compact loader, as well as the snow blade that I have included. Uh, the snow blade that we've chosen, uh, provides a lot of functionality that, uh, True North Equipment doesn't have authorization to sell in that versatility. So I put both those prices together as well as an extended warranty from RDO requesting that we purchase all of that, uh, for the total price of $106,084.
Anybody have any questions for Reed?
I have a couple, Mr. President. This is Dale.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Reed, is this going to, uh, what, what kind of a problem will you run into? Or will it be a problem like for warranty being that the RDO, do they have a facility in town here?
Um, boy, you know, I guess I can't, I, unfortunately, I can't even answer the question if they have a facility in Grand Forks. I believe they do. Uh, maybe Jason could help me with that. Jason, if I can call a flyer on you.
Yeah. Talking. You're out on Gateway Drive.
Okay. Um, thank, thank you. Uh, for, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Elms, in talking about service and warranty, I talked a lot with our Public Works Department, who does a lot of work with both True North and with RDO on these loaders. Uh, and both, uh, each of them, when I, when I talked about the, kind of the combination of getting this snow blade and the machine all from one place, both suggested that that would be, um, a wise decision for us so that all of the orders and the work are all through RDO and said that they've had no problems with RDO's service record in, in their work through Public Works and the Street Department with that.
Okay. And I, I guess I knew RDO was out there. I totally spaced it out. I forgot all about it. That was my concern that, that if it would be a hassle getting warranty. Um, what do you plan on doing with this thing?
Its primary use will be for snow removal. Uh, specifically, the trail system is one that we, our pickup trucks have a really difficult time getting through and we get deeper drifts. So this would give us a lot more power, uh, and a lot more speed than what, say, our Skid steer or our Tool Cat does. Uh, and the other side of that would then be our parking lots for snow removal at our ice arenas. Uh, we do the same thing. We use three-quarter ton pickups right now to move that snow. And when we get a heavy snowfall, a lot of times the parking lots are left untouched until the city street crew can come and help us out and bust through so that we can get some work done. Uh, so primarily in the winter, the snow removal will be the main, main use. Uh, and I think the summer use, the, there's certainly a lot of versatility to it that's a little bit endless and what we don't even know we could do with it because we haven't had the tool like this before. Uh, but in the cemetery and in Parks Maintenance, I see it being very valuable to us.
Okay. And I know you said there was money in the budget. Uh, I mean, it was, it was, uh, planned in the budget for, is money there for it?
That's correct. It was, it was planned in the 2020 budget. It would be paid through the capital financing fund. So it would be put on a nine-year repayment plan. Um, similar to we do with a lot of our larger equipment, our Zambonis or like that, our Movers, um, larger equipment purchases through the city are purchased that way.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you. Um, wondering, and this is just a point that I was, this out of thin air, who or which job classifications will be operating this?
We would, we would plan for our Parks Foreman and our Arena Maintenance Supervisor to be the primary users of the machine. Um, talking with Mr. Murphy about that, as we put this in the budget, we do feel that our Parks Maintenance employees would be capable of it based off the size. It's very, fairly similar from a size and operation standpoint to like our Skid steer. It's just, is a little larger and a little more functional. Uh, but primarily those two that I listed.
Thank you. And I guess the reason for asking is, is I'm just wondering, do we perceive or foresee any, um, issues with, um, like grievances for operator pay or any, any of those type of things? Like people from, from the Teamsters Bargaining asking that it has to be run by someone from Public Works?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I, I can address that if that's okay. Um, you, you never know, um, if grievances are going to be filed. You never know if grievances are going to be filed. It's, it's possible. I'm not going to say it won't be filed. The only thing I can say is that we had a similar grievance filed in the past regarding the Tool Cat. And so the, the real distinction is, is whether or not everybody is, the lower, the lower ones are the same as a truck driver, which is up to a certain pound. And then there's the ones that go to like the hydraulics, the much larger equipment. You know, they could make that argument, but it, it would be a very, very difficult one to say that this, that this piece of equipment would extend to a heavy equipment piece of operation. It's, it's definitely smaller than, than a utility, than a dump truck, you know, that the truck drivers use. So they could grieve it, but I, I don't see it being very successful.
Thank you. Like I said, it's, it'd be the city's, you know, vehicle. I'm, I'm in favor of getting something like this. I just want to make sure that we are allowing, you know, the right supervision for it and it doesn't end up being a, a conflict between now, you know, Jason's guys have to run it to do Reed stuff or any type, and those guys work well together anyway, but just want to make sure that we're at least thinking of those things.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm all for it.
Anybody else? If not, move on. Thank you, Reed. Number four, update on park facility improvements and community survey.
Again, Mr. President, I'm going to attempt to, so everybody can see the power. Okay, so we, for the last couple of weeks, in an attempt to continue the community engagement through this ice arena ballpark improvement conversation and as it regard, as it relates to the sales tax, we've had a conversation with JLG, working closely with them again on the community input part of it. And of course, in our current situation, not being able to have in-person meetings, we decided to have a couple of more surveys than what we initially intended to replace some of the in-person meetings. So we ran a survey for the last couple of weeks from the dates of March 20th through Monday, April 6th, and received a total of 305 respondents to that survey. In, in general and summarizing, I think that's a, a good number of responses. We certainly always wish it would be more, but I think in general, we're fairly pleased with the number that responded. In comparison, talking with some people in Grand Forks a few years back, when the library was a large conversation and they were running some public input surveys on those, they had about 700 respondents. So the community size of 300, I think, is a pretty nice place for us to start in this conversation. So with this survey, I'm just going to kind of run through some of the statistics and a little bit just read off what the survey has said, and then I have a point at the end for some discussion or questions, if anybody has any for me. Of the 305 respondents, we had 259 who were from East Grand Forks, residents of our community. The remainder of those were either from outside the community, within the county, or even outside of our region. For the most of the responses that I show you today, when I talk through that, I'm going to discuss the 259 respondents that are from East Grand Forks, since that would be our voter base should a sales tax promotion ever come up to that. If anybody has any questions on anything outside of that, the cumulative of the 305, I can certainly provide those after the meeting to anybody. The first question we asked was, would you support a 1% tax increase to pay for identified improvements at the facilities of those? 163 answered that yes, they would support a 1% sales tax increase. 31 said no, and another 65 said maybe to that question. The next question we asked is asking to rank the projects in a priority order, one being the greatest, five being the least important. So you see on this chart here the way those were ranked. Just, this is a really kind of a large graph to look at, but one that I thought would be good for you to see some detail if you want to look closer at it. And we'll touch on some of the major points of this as we go through the, the conversation here. It took all the rankings, the Survey Monkey took all the rankings we had and listed them in a weighted score to show us what the cumulative answer was from the highest priority all the way down to the lowest. And so you're seeing that on this chart now. The highest score for being the highest is the Civic Center renovation. The next most important to all the respondents from East Grand Forks is the ball field improvements with a score of 3.12, followed by renovations to allow the VFW to remain an ice arena. And lastly, the renovations to convert the VFW to a wellness center. Of those rankings, 122 of the first place rankings were for the Civic Center to be renovated as, or expanded as their top choice. Of those 122, a further breakdown, 49 of those chose that the VFW would, should remain an ice arena as their second choice. 43 of the 122 selected the VFW to be converted to a wellness center as their second choice. And lastly, 29 of the 122 selected ball field improvements as their next choice. The next one in line, the ball field improvements with 33 respondents choosing that as their first priority. 16 of those 33 selected Civic Center renovations as their second choice, and 13 of the 33 to the wellness center as their second choice. Again, just looking at the top choices, the VFW arena had 52 people that said that their top priority was that that should remain an ice arena. With that, of those, 35 selected the Civic Center renovation as their second choice, and 11 of those 52 selected the ball field improvements as their second choice. And finally, the last is the 34 respondents that selected the VFW arena to remain as a wellness center. 19 of those 34 selected the Civic Center renovations as their second priority, and 10 of those 34 selected ball field improvements as their second priority. The question that was asked next, you believe these projects should be partially funded through private fundraising? Of that, a pretty overwhelming answer of 173 said yes, they feel that should be the case. 14 only said no, and another 72 said maybe they should. Now, we'll see some interesting input to the next question as it relates to fundraising with this. Next one being asked is, if it's privately fundraised, raised, would you be willing to contribute? Only 72 said yes. 72 said no, and 115 said maybe. Next few slides, we'll just take a little deeper look at some of the results. I'll try to just touch on a few of these, and hopefully all of you receive the packet and you can read through them in further detail. But one thing we found is that the majority answer, the Civic Center, is one that could be renovated, and if so, they, 53% would support a 1% tax increase. 65 of the 259 respondents answered maybe to the question of supporting a 1% sales tax increase. 49 of those believe the project should be funded by private donors, and 54 of those 65 believe the Civic Center is their top, should be a top three priority. And finally, 122 of the East Grand Forks residents chose the Civic Center as their top priority. Of those, 82% said that a 1% sales tax would be good in their opinion. The next page, of, of the 259 respondents that took the survey, 174, 67% ranked the Civic Center renovation or the VFW to remain as an ice arena as their top priority. Of those, 126 said they would support a 1% sales tax increase. An additional 38 answered that maybe they would. Comparatively, of the 33 residents that ranked ball field improvements as their top project, 15 of those answered yes to the question of a 1% sales tax increase. 11 answered maybe, and seven of those answered no, they would not support a 1% sales tax increase. And finally, 31 of the 259 East Grand Forks respondents said they would not support a 1% sales tax increase. In looking through some of the comments that I shared within the packet, some of the feelings towards those that said no, they would not support it, is that if the projects move forward, they feel they should be completely privately funded. Some are concerned just in general with the idea of raising taxes in any regard, and others commented that the city should not fund projects that only benefit a small percentage of the citizens. But in summary, just a few things to re, re-go through. The number one priority for most respondents was that the Civic Center should be renovated and/or expanded. Based on the weighted scores, the total scores from rankings one through five, ball field improvements came in with the second highest ranking. Many of the respondents, third of the weighted scores and second to the top priorities, feel that the VFW arena should remain as an ice arena. Many of the comments we received, and it's one that we didn't really look at in our study, many of the comments were included that we need to do a better, take a better look at the Blue Line Arena and how that could be improved as part of this plan for our facilities. And although it's not ranked as a high priority from the one through five scores, with it being the fourth on the list is the Wellness Center. Specifically, many of those that chose ball fields as their first improvement then shows the Wellness Center as their second ranked improvement. And that's one, I think, that if we're going to continue to move forward with the Wellness Center under the discussions we've had for funding and with how that all could look going forward, we should ask ourselves some questions on what we'd like the Wellness Center slash multipurpose facility to look like. Our conversations at council meetings in many cases have been around just a turf facility, kind of an indoor field house style. But when we talk to people in the community, there's, there's, I think, a lot of confusion on that, anything from that it should be a, a full-service gym type of setting, like a Choice Health and Fitness or a YMCA, where others maybe feel just a turf facility with a walking track is more in line. But all of those have a very different impact, and of course, how, what, what we would plan for, what kind of funding would they need, what staffing we'd look at and so forth. So that may be one that we need to look a little closer at through some surveys. And finally, just as a follow-up to all of this, is if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Our next step would be is that I am working to put together a little bit more of a detailed survey that could be specifically targeted to certain user groups within these projects to be able to have a little bit more of a design consideration to them so that we can take the next step on looking at any type of concepts and make sure our plans are still going forward the correct way from a building perspective, a planning perspective in that regard. And all of that, of course, coming back into then, any potential funding and what our timeline looks for that now, in our, in light of our new situation, all of that may be slowed down in the process. So the, the most important piece of this at this point being, this is valuable time for us to plan for the projects and make sure that when, whenever we come out of it and come out as a community together of this COVID situation, that we have at least our plan in place for what we want the projects to look like going forward.
Anybody have any questions for Reed at this time?
You know, I guess I would have to offer, Reed, I want to just thank you for staying on this. This is the kind of fact-finding and the kind of summarization that we promised to do. You know, we agreed that this process got turned upside down by having to go to the legislature first and then go through this whole discovery process with our community. What are their priorities? What would they want to see? And how do we best spend their money toward this objective? So I do want to say thank you. This is exactly what we promised we'd do three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10 months ago to, to carry forward with this kind of community input. And sometimes you answer one question and now you have five new questions to answer, but that's okay. That's kind of how the planning process works. So you sort through the next five, and you know what? In the end, you have some clarity on, on which direction you want to go. So again, I just say thank you for continuing on in this process, even in the middle of some pretty bizarre times.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else have any questions or you want anything added to this survey? I think that Mr. Reed is looking for a direction that if we'd like to ask any other questions or anything else that'd be part of this next phase of questioning and talking to the groups.
I liked Reed's presentation. He does an excellent job. We got the right guy doing the, the good things for our community.
Mr. President, this is Dale.
Yes, sir.
I've talked to quite a few businesses in the community, and I haven't talked to probably a handful of them that even want to see a 1% sales tax. A lot of, a lot of public has talked to me because they know that I will bring it forward. I've talked to a lot of people that don't even want to see this project at all. We've targeted the people, and I asked Reed this question when he was going to do this, when he went to the Civic Center, to the hockey game, to target the hockey players on this thing, how he's going to target the rest of the citizens of East Grand Forks. And I don't, I don't know how you're going to get together with them people to get them together, because now you went to the hockey people with your program, and now you want everybody to come view and, and do whatever. It bothers me. The other thing that bothers me is that the state we're in right now, we don't even know how many businesses are going to survive when this is all over and done with. We don't know when it's going to be done. I, I can't see any business in East Grand Forks wanting to see a 1% sales tax. I think this is going to need to be put on hold for a while until we can figure out what's going to happen after we get out of this situation we're in.
Anything else, Mr. Helms?
Oh, sure, that's it.
Reed, do you have any, anything else you would like to add, sir?
Just, just a quick follow-up to that. I would say that I agree that the sales tax conversation is, is a huge conversation for our community, and the timing of it is, is of utmost, utmost importance for us to have that conversation, and, and we don't want to do anything that's going to further hurt our community in that way. But this, I do see that this timeframe, this time period, COVID situation or not, is valuable for us in terms of planning that, for what our facilities need to look like in the future, whether that's one year, two year, five years, 10 years down the road. This is important right now for us to still find a way to get the pulse of our community as a whole so that we have an answer for what our ice arenas need to look like as we need to put money into them. And frankly, I need answers on those things, whether that is even maintaining our current facilities, because we've got, we've got work that we know needs to get done in the next one year or two years or three years. And the answers to what that work looks like may look a lot different depending upon what our plan is going forward, whether that's taking a short-term fix approach or investing in a larger repair to a current building. That's all impacted by what our funding sources may be or what our plans are for the future. So that part of it, I think, is the message I would like to send is that we need to continue from a building perspective in planning so that we have an idea of what we want to do in the future.
Yeah, and most of the people I talked to, Reed, had said the same thing, that they would, they could probably support the fact of repairing or fixing up our existing buildings, but they were totally against spending the, I, I don't know where we're at now, 24 million for a new arena and whatever else. They were totally against that, but repairing what we have, most of them probably said they could support that.
Mr. Olson, President, if I may, just one brief comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring, respond to Mr. Helms' statement about the hockey portion and really only going after the hockey part of it. I guess I don't want to speak for Reed here, but unfortunately, with the COVID and the shelter in place and everything that has happened, the, the open house and the sharing at the hockey event was really the only one that, that was able to take place. I know the Parks and Rec and Reed had several others scheduled that have had to be canceled just due to the fact that we weren't able to have them due to the sheltering in place. And I know there is more that were going to be scheduled this summer here. Potentially, they might still happen depending on what, what happens with this. So I just want to say, unfortunately, that, that was the only public input as far as being out in the public that we were able to get at this point, and that was just because of the unique circumstances. And that was just because of the unique circumstances.
I just want to be sure that the public has a chance on this because that's their main concern. That we're just going to push this thing through and the public isn't going to have a chance for any say.
Well, Dale, they're going to have a say on it because if it gets to a point where the legislator approves us doing this, it's going to be up for a vote. So everybody's going to have their say, but I know what people are questioning, what are we going to do now, especially when we can't attend or have these public meetings and come talk and see, you know, the information on it. You can go online and look at it, but you know, I know a lot of people like to come to meetings and make comments and take a look at what we're doing. And I know Reed would really want to have those and as soon as we can. I know Reed is, you know, going to do that, so hopefully we can get the word out and get the discussion, you know, going forward and keep the open mind on everything. I mean, that's what we have to do. So, Mayor?
Yeah. Back to the question of timeframe on this project. The likelihood of this showing up on the ballot this fall is pretty close to zero as I see it. It has to pass through the legislature, signed by the governor, before we can put it on the ballot. And their priorities in St. Paul have so shifted to COVID and recovery and the funding of individuals and businesses through this time. Their whole legislative agenda has been put off to the side. And so the likelihood of it coming through the legislature this year is almost zero. So please know, and this is to speak to our community members, this is not a case of our Park and Rec Superintendent and the City Council trying to sneak something through when y'all are in COVID hibernation. This is not that. This really is just setting the table for more than likely a year from now or whenever we could bring it around. Not likely to happen this year, at least as I see it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything on that?
I guess I'm a little frustrated with the comment that we're going to push this thing through and jam it through too. So Dale, when you talk to those people, make sure they come to the meeting and make sure they come and talk to everybody. And ask them this, if they want four million dollars from the tax base, when we have to fix those ranks in a hurry. And we all know that four million dollars, what that can do to our tax base. We all know that. So, I mean, they've got it. We're listening to everybody. We're not trying to jam anything down anybody's throat. So I'm a little frustrated when I hear that you're coming and speaking and thinking that no one else is listening to anybody. So that's a little frustrating to me.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Reed, do you have anything else?
Just if anybody has any direction on the next survey. The plan for me right now would be that it'd be sent to specific targeted user groups, potentially ball field users, wellness center users, ice arena users. Is it okay in your eyes that it's directed towards those user groups? Or do you like, would you rather see a full kind of one survey that everybody in the community gets a chance to answer to the same questions? Because we're going to try to get into a little bit of what could these buildings be used for and from a design perspective too. And some people that are specific users may have more insight into that than someone that doesn't use them. And there certainly can be multiple surveys. There could be many different avenues to make sure that everybody still has a way to answer a question or have a voice to it. But that would be one follow-up if there's any direction to that.
Anybody have any suggestions or areas of, you know, the community that you want these sent to? If you haven't, if you can't think of anything now, please reach out to Reed. But was someone going to speak there? Sorry?
Yeah, that was me. I think the more people we can get, no matter where they're from, to get their opinion, the better off we are.
This is Mark Demers. Another thought we talked about, you know, reaching out with the chamber, to business owners, maybe there could be a targeted survey to the business community as well.
I think the one survey to everybody because I don't know how you would pick and choose on who's going to be a wellness center goer, who's going to be a baseball goer, goer, you know? I mean, you kind of know hockey because we have them in Parks and Rec and everything else. I think it should go to, the one survey should go to everybody.
Okay.
All right. Reed, anything else, then, sir?
That does it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Move on to number five, discussion on crisis loans from Economic Development Authority. Mr. Gordy?
There are two related issues. One issue has to do with the longstanding policy that was created years ago by the city and the EDA, that the loans be no more than one-third of the total amount that the business was investing into itself at the time. And maximum one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That also has to do with public care requirements at the state level. So that's one issue. The other issue is whether there should be small, one-thousand to five-thousand-dollar forgivable loans to help tide businesses over during this time. What I'm going to try to do is like Reed did, bring up a PowerPoint. And if I'm successful, I'll run through some of the background and then we can talk about those issues. I also sent this out to the non-council members of the, I sent the RCA out to the non-council members of the EDA because the council members are going to have an opportunity to discuss it here. And I have input from them that I can share with you when we get done going through the PowerPoint. So wish me luck. What came up? Did the PowerPoint come up? Oh, I s-
I don't see it on my screen, but I didn't see Reed's either, so I don't know if it's just because we're in the chambers or not, so.
I'm not in the chamber and I was able to see Reed's screen. I'm not sure if anybody else was, but I was able to see it.
No problem. We'll just listen very carefully.
Let me just talk through it. I sent it all through. So we're dealing with, as a broad category, I'm calling them crisis loans. And one of the issues, the first issue is which businesses should receive loans? We have a lot of businesses, over two-hundred businesses in town. And we don't have that much money. We have limited funds available that we can help businesses with. Some revolving loan funds. It appears come-for-serv model of helping businesses. They've run out of money. And as this goes along further and further, they need funds and they don't have anything to help their businesses with at this point. So the issue becomes who should receive funds? Possible, some possible criteria for targeted businesses, for businesses that were operating prior to the COVID-19 shutdowns. They can demonstrate a multiplier impact upon other key industries or businesses. They provide essential services for COVID-19 response. That could be like trucking or something like that. Pay above city or county average wages, employ full-time workers, and can demonstrate solvency prior to the COVID-19 crisis. That would require some expedited underwriting for review of their loan requests. Sources of funds, for us in East Grand Forks, there are two primary sources. It's the local Minnesota Investment Fund revolving loan fund dollars. And then the IRP fund that was the USDA rural development dollars that we paid off. So we have some flexibility in how to use those, that money. Possibly in the future, there may be other sources. Economic Adjustment Assistance Program, it's out of the U.S. Economic Development Authority. It'll require application when the notice of funding appears, funding availability appears. There are CDG funds that are being distributed under the CARES Act that will be distributed to jurisdictions that are entitlement communities and otherwise to the state. And we do not know how the state is going to share those dollars with the communities like ourselves that don't, that are not entitlement communities. We also have to look, and if we forgive loans, how are we going to rebuild dollars that will be able to help other businesses? So possible city refunding, or how do we do those kinds of things? And then we need to think about the uses of funds for payroll, wages, salaries, healthcare costs. How do we verify the number of employees and the cost to be certified? And do we just deal with costs not covered by the Paycheck Protection Program, which is the PPP program? That can be some general operations, interest on secured debt or other types of expenditures. For loan sizes, most local revolving loan funds have set limits of ten to twenty thousand dollars for the money they will help during this period of time, try to stretch their dollars. There are other sources available, such as SBA money and some money from D that's available. There's also a program that's coming through the Federal Reserve Bank that we haven't seen information on yet, but that will also be available. And there's options for sizing the amount of the loan based on employment. If you have one employee, you may get a certain amount, that's such as what the SBA is using for their IDAL loans, EIDAL loans. Where you can get the first ten thousand, but if you have one employee, you're entitled to one thousand. Two employees, two, ten employees would be ten thousand, twenty employees would be ten thousand. That's the grant portion of the IDAL loan. We need to think about terms. Other revolving loan funds are doing twelve to sixty months and they could do longer. We've talked about a five-year loan. The rate could be zero percent to one percent. The percentage rate could be start low and go increase over time. When we talked about it, it was about a one percent rate. And payments could be deferred for three to six months or longer. It could be interest-only, possible after the first deferral period. And the principal payments could be backloaded versus a straight-line amortization. We were looking at it, no interest, no payments for six months, and then a straight one percent, straight amortization. Are we going to require collateral? Are we going to require guarantees? Do we want to waive those requirements for loan under a certain amount, say five thousand dollars and under? Do we want to require personal guarantees by owners who have at least twenty percent ownership stake in the company? And then the application, we have a two-part application. If we're doing the forgivable loans, we could probably do that just with the first part of the application, but keep it simple. What type of required documentation do we want? Or do we want them just to submit their PPP documentation? We can work from there. And what are the terms for forgiveness? Will it be return to full employment, return to full payroll, monthly revenues meeting or exceeding pre-shutdown monthly revenues, any something else, some combination thereof? And the other thing is, EDA has gone to requiring ACH, automatic withdrawals for all payments. So that brings us around. Are there any questions on that first? So that brings us around to two possibilities that we've looked at. One is a small forgivable loan, a one-thousand to five-thousand dollars. We'd have to establish a criteria for getting a loan. We'd have to establish the criteria for forgiveness on those loans. And then we'd have to think about how we're going to refund the money that we forgave, okay? The second is, do we want to provide, do we want to adjust the percentage rate that's available for local participation? I've talked to several businesses. They are looking at certain sums for their PPP loans. If we stayed at one-third, a lot of those loans are in the forty, eighty-thousand-dollar range. One-third would mean on a forty-thousand-dollar loan, they could borrow twenty thousand dollars. On an eighty-thousand-dollar loan, they could borrow forty thousand dollars. That would be a one-third, two-thirds match. Do we want to go higher than that or do we want to cap the amount of money that's available for those loans? But I got the response that I got from the EDA members is they'd like to look at a cap on how much money would be available. That's the primary response that they have provided to me. They are interested in looking at things. They said we can go as high as forty to fifty percent if we need to. But like I said, in looking at the PPP and talking to businesses, we may, you know, what we probably, what I'm saying is that we probably will want to have some other type of financing coming in and this will cover the things that's not covering. And it seems reasonable with the PPP program, which is the most popular program, that we do something to cover the non-PPP expenses. So, in a nutshell, what are your thoughts? And what do you think to, that we should look at for a program like this? Or should we look at a program like, first question, should we look at programs like this? And the second thing is, what should they look like?
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions. I guess I have a list of questions to start out with. First, Mr. Gordy, have you assessed what the real demand is for this? Obviously, we know there's a lot of people that are hurting businesses, residents, citizens that are hurting right now. But what's the real demand that we anticipate for this? And then I guess the second part of that is, what do we anticipate the effective demand it would be? Is just by putting a program out there like this, do we anticipate having additional people that wouldn't even need it? Like I said, if you have a forgivable loan, maybe people that wouldn't need it would come and grab it.
First question is, do we, have we assessed where there's a demand? No. Anecdotally, there have been some people who've talked about needing some extra money. They've been able to fit with their PPP loan in the one-third, two-thirds parameter. We have to look at the cap, but there haven't been a lot of people as this, as the stay-at-home goes longer, it will probably put more pressure on businesses to survive by taking, looking at additional resources. But what a lot of businesses have said, they're not interested in taking on more debt. They're trying to figure out how to do something where they have things that are forgivable or where they don't have to assume more debt. And Mark, what's the second question?
Well, I guess what was, what would be the effective demand? Like I said, if you're offering, or if we end up offering forgivable loans, I could imagine that the current demand could escalate just to people that would say, well, I can fulfill these things. I don't necessarily need it for survival, but I can make a case where I could use it. We could go from twenty businesses to a hundred businesses that would try to use this.
If we did a hundred businesses at five thousand dollars each, that's five hundred thousand dollars. That's more money than, for example, than is in the IRP. That would completely deplete that account, plus take some of the revolving loan fund. I think we have to establish criteria that, having some sort of need-based criteria.
And I guess you're going to come up with criteria that are, that have to be broad enough to be used. I can imagine that there's going to be a lot of people that fall under that umbrella. I just, I see with this, well, I can go on to my other questions. You're talking about measuring payroll conditions, those type of things. Do you anticipate, how much time and cost do you anticipate doing for the follow-up? I mean, this is like, you're asking for a five-year loan with a twelve-month forgivable if you have certain conditions. How much time and effort do you anticipate spending getting all that stuff?
It could be something like forty-eight-seven, okay? Depending upon the demand and how many loans there were, Mark, it could take, it could take an extraordinary amount of time. Because we do ACH, we will know that we're getting the payments. But verification of all this information, that's a lot of paperwork that's associated with all of this. I mean, we do it on a loan-by-loan basis right now. If we get fifty or a hundred additional loans out of this, that's a lot of paperwork that we're going to be doing. And, you know, I'll just have to work even harder.
Would be, in the event of bankruptcy, would we be in like a second or third or fourth position so we would just kind of write that off anyway?
I have to defer to Mr. Calst, but I believe so.
What, going back to the demand issue, with, you know, we know what our pockets are. We don't have giant pockets. We've already seen, you know, the big boys. We've already seen, you know, the big boys, the federal governments, the state governments starting to step up. What, you know, what kind of effect are we going to see, you know, in the, with a $5,000 or $1,000 loan when all these other dollars are going to be flowing?
That's a good question. It will, it's just a little bit, you know, when companies are needing 40 or 50 or $100,000, it's not much money to help them along. It shows good faith on the part of the city, but that's, it may not be much to make the difference between success or failure.
And then, would you be looking, since those funds don't have the dollars in them, would you be looking for a transfer from the general fund to subsidize these?
If we ended up with a lot of money like that, we would probably, it would probably have to be a transfer at some point in the future if we needed to provide one of our MIF loans for one of our businesses in town that was expanding or growing or a business coming into town. That's what these funds have been used for in the past, and we see the expansions. Mayo, for example, the Northland Custom Woodworking, Northern Machine, Up North Pizza. I mean, we've been able to help a lot of businesses expand or even get started, like Up North Pizza, to, and that's what the monies have been used for in the past. We can't leave ourselves short and unable to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah. Thanks for all the answers. I guess my thing is, is, you know, we know there's a lot of pain going around. We all want to, we all instinctively want to help in any way we can. I just fear that the small nature of this, coupled with the, kind of the, not to be, no pun intended, but the viral nature of something like this, where there will be more people wanting it than I think we would anticipate. I think we would do our businesses better by holding our taxes down in the out years. I think a giant transfer of funds, you know, near maybe half a million dollars to these small things isn't going to do our best. I think the best thing we can do is keep our tax levy flat for the next couple of years and use that as a springboard. If there are certain, you know, specific things, maybe we take them on as a one-off item instead of creating a whole program that I just, I don't see going well.
One of the things I'd like to suggest is that there are people who need, in addition to the PPP, $20,000 or so, 20, 25, excuse me, $20,000 or $25,000, $15,000 in order to cover their other costs. I would suggest that if we are doing crisis loans, we can use the PPP as a match so that we know that that'll be at least two-thirds of the funding that's available. We can do, match that with one-third of the total amount up to, say, 20 or 25,000. I agree with you. I'm concerned about long-term and the viability of the funds if we spend them all. I'm also concerned about the viability of businesses. I mean, we can't have businesses just fail because we haven't stepped in and tried to help too. But the PPP seems to be helping a lot of businesses right now.
Anything else, Mr. Demers?
Mayor. One of the things that happened that made us wonder if perhaps there was a need for this, a short-term, smaller dollar amount, potentially forgivable loan, is the request that we had for a grace period on property tax. That's not an enormous sum of dollars, a half-year's property tax, but businesses believed, and I can see where it would be true, that it could be very helpful for them to have a 60-day grace period on the payment of their property taxes. So that strong request to help them over this initial hump kind of gave us an idea that there is a short-term need right now. And how about this short-term need? What if you're a restaurant that is just hanging in there, and you know you're going to get a delivery of your groceries, of your food product that comes in that you turn into the tasty stuff that you serve to your patrons, but you're not quite sure how you're going to pay for that delivery? I know some of them end up on cash-on delivery. They don't have account balances that they can carry from month to month. And so I think it's okay to consider also. I do agree with you, Mr. Gordy, that this Paycheck Protection Program is a godsend at this time for businesses of all sizes, from the very smallest up to some mid-sized businesses. And the turnaround from the government with the local bankers has been remarkable. And yet I do believe also there are some businesses either that wouldn't qualify, they did not get their application in right away, or if they did, they did have some other debt that kind of been eating their lunch. And so how about as a potential way of doing this, perhaps you could open and close an application period for a week or two. Then you'd have all the applications in, the deadline would pass, and you would allocate some dollars to those applications of, say, no more than $150,000 or $200,000 of your fund that you have set aside. So that's how you would limit, you know, how far this thing could blow up. You'd open and close the application period. The group, whoever it would be that's going to do the allocation, could look at each application on its merits and allocate dollars to that business up to the total of, you know, between that one and 5,000, and up to the total of what we've earmarked for this purpose. There's no reason this has to blow up and turn into a bigger dollar amount because we're in control of how we set up the program on the front end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Have you had a discussion, Mr. Gordy, with your board of setting the dollar limits? I know you mentioned a little bit, you had some feedback, but what else have you heard from them? As the mayor stated, has there been that discussion of that? And where are you at with that?
With the waiver of the percentage, they were, we were talking about 20,000. They thought that the one to five might work. There is concern about how do we refund the accounts where we have forgiven loans. We see that all the time in the 280 account, when we forgive loan, forgive the $5,000 loans that we used to have.
Somehow you'd want to target and identify those businesses that really, really need this to get from here to the good days ahead. I mean, that's really what this would be, is kind of an emergency life support to get from here to the good days that are going to be ahead. We know they're coming. Is it one month from now? Is it two months from now? Hard to say, but we know that the good days are ahead.
Maybe, Mr. Gordy, you can address, I'm sure there's people listening, maybe out in the public, where this money is coming from, or where would you like to see it come from, so that people are aware that, you know, we're, you know, is it Citi Fund? Is it EDA Fund? Just kind of maybe walk through it and just make sure everybody's on the same page.
The city has two funds from, that it will use for loans, and it's revolving loan funds. One is funded out of the MIF disaster, out of the disaster loan funds, or disaster funds that were given to the city after the 1997 disaster. And the other was a loan that we took out with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, World Development. And when that was repaid, we netted roughly $450,000, $475,000 in that account. Those are the accounts that we have available. There's a couple million dollars in the MIF account, but a lot of that's already accounted for. And I don't know offhand the current balance available in that account. I'd have to look it up. But those are the two accounts that are locally controlled and local funds. There are other sources of funding available. D, the state has money. There are two programs in particular at the state level. One is a disaster relief program. They, in order to stretch their dollars, they're asking that people also apply for funding elsewhere, like SBA funding in particular. And then they are asking that anybody who receives an SBA loan use that to repay the D dollars. They also have a guaranteed loan program that was revived and has money in it. And you can get a total loan of $250,000. They would guarantee $200,000 of that. So you can go to your banker and work with your local banker to try to get favorable terms and under that program. On the federal level, there are at least three programs that I'm, that are working right now. One is the Paycheck Protection Program, the PPP program. One is the idle loan, which is the emergency injury, or economic injury disaster loan program. That's at 3.75% for up to 30 years. And I don't remember offhand, but both of those programs can go up into the millions for the amount of money you can obtain for those programs. And then the Federal Reserve has put together a program, is putting together a program as well, and we haven't, I haven't seen the details on yet. So there are a lot of sources for dollars right now. So the question is, for things that fall through the cracks on there, do we want to make adjustments in our programs to do that? And that can be the small loans that the mayor has suggested that are forgivable. It can also be loans that you use other funds as the, as the match. I mean, ourselves to one-third, but then capping those funds at a certain amount so we can stretch our dollars too. Those loans, like you talked about, would be 1%. Would be 1%, five years, and we would not take any payments or charge any interest for the first six months, so effectively it's a 66-month loan. Does that answer what you're looking for, Mark?
Yes, sir. I just want everybody to be on the same page, just, you know, so. I mean, what I'd like to see is something brought back that would have a program that's set up that we can take a look at. I know you're looking for ideas and feedback from us, but I think a system of how you're going to handle it and how you're going to walk through it and approve everyone, I think that needs to have the good foundation of how this is going to be done and who is going to be handling it. You know, we'll have Mr. Galstead, attorney, in handling paperwork and just think about the workload that we would have with him and also with you, as others indicated on here. So I'd be mindful of what we can do, but in, you know, as the mayor indicated, maybe have the window. But I think that's what we need to really look at and make sure that, like I said, if, people that are falling through the cracks who can't get things done, I mean, we want to do whatever we can, but I want to make sure that we're not passing this along either to the general budget and to the taxpayers. So that's why I wanted you to walk through everything to make sure that people understood. So.
One last thing that I would just say about the PPP, and maybe us dovetailing into the PPP. So Paycheck Protection Program, there's a good chance for most businesses that when this disaster is over, that money is gone. It did not go to buy an asset that has long-term value. It's gone. It was used to get that business through that difficult time where there was greatly reduced or no revenue at all. It was used to pay your staff, number one, and it was used to pay their benefits, including health insurance and any other benefits they might get. You can use it to pay rent. You can use it to pay interest on some loans and some utilities. And that's gone, right? And so anything that we do to dovetail into that, we would want to have the idea that, again, these are businesses that might not have a lot of collateral to offer because the purpose of the PPP is to just be gone. It is expensed out to these dear souls that show up every day and collect a paycheck, and then the basic necessities of getting that business from here to the good days ahead. So I guess I'd be a little hesitant to dovetail into the PPP with our funds because historically we're used to bricks and mortar and asset purchase that now becomes collateral on that note. So I'd be just a little hesitant to partner our funds with the PPP dollars because, again, historically, two different purposes.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any input or questions for Mr. Gordy? Mr. Gordy, is there something you can put together and, with your board and bring back to us?
I will, what I will do is I'll put something together, run it through the board. We can still work within the parameters that are within the existing policies of the city, but I will put something together and run it through the board and get back to you.
Anybody else have anything at this time?
Yeah, I'm kind of, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson.
All of this EPPA and PPA, all of this stuff, I think that the city council, we should pronounce what they are and not abbreviate.
Oh, we've said it about 20 times. It's the Paycheck Protection Program.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, but other people out here, whatever, I'll tell you what, we're just common people. We're here in the Red River Valley.
Absolutely. And the idle, the idle that you hear Mr. Gordy talking about, that is the, what is that? That's the emergency?
Economic injury disaster.
Disaster loan, yep. Economic injury disaster loan, idle. And that's the one that?
You know, I just used to, I'll tell, I'm a common person. I represent the Fort Worth over here, these Grand Forks. I'll tell you what, I appreciate everything. I really appreciate Reed over there doing his thing. But hello, love you guys, doing all right. We'll get through this, blah, blah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy, for taking time to go through this, and hopefully we can look at it and see what we can do to help out our businesses in the community here. So appreciate your time on that, sir. Move on to number six. Consider support for the takeout liquor during the shelter-in-place order. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We got this actually through the chamber. It's something that the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association put together, it's a request that they want to, that they sent to Minnesota Governor Tim Walz. They're hoping for an executive order that would allow our, roll back some of the requirements that restaurants and particularly bars and grills have during the shuttered portion of the time where they are, they cannot have any sit-down business. Current legislation allows for takeout delivery of food, but it does not allow for the off-sale of liquor. They are arguing that bars and grills, restaurants, in particular, like places like sports bars and that, make as much off of liquor sales as they do on food sales. So even though they're still able to sell food, they are still taking a hit from, from the takeout portion of it. So what, the letter that they put together in sending to Walz, and that they're asking for cities to support, a couple of things that need to be pointed out on this is, it's, even what they put together is not, does not go as far as, like, say, what is happening across the river in the city of Grand Forks. What they're requesting is that bars and restaurants would be required to sell food with all takeout liquor orders. They wouldn't be able to sell just liquor. All the alcohol sold off-sale would need to be in prepackaged, closed in pre-sealed containers. There would be no mixed drinks allowed and no hard liquor allowed. And that they would be capped at 12 cans of 12 ounces of beer per order and two bottles of wine per order. So I guess with that, I'm just bringing this forward to the council to see if this is something that the council would be interested in supporting, and if so, we could put together a resolution for next week for action. I will note that I did speak with Brad Peterson from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities earlier today on another issue, and he did bring this up. He did see this, and he was aware of that so far, because he was aware of the, of the letter that went there from the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association to the, to the governor. So there's one other city currently that's pushing fairly hard on this, that's Northfield. Otherwise, it's, what he's been saying is that the cities have been focusing on other issues, but he does support this.
No problem with it.
Okay. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Murphy, this is Mark.
Yes.
Say, I did receive a phone call last night from my business owner in town here that actually doesn't live in town here, but she's well-connected and been talking to her partners. And they were telling me Um, and they were telling me that, uh, Mr. Walz made, Governor Walz made a comment yesterday or direction he's hoping to push us through the legislature, to have them do something because he doesn't want to do an executive order. But I think we still need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help out our businesses here. Um, and to make sure they know that, you know, we support this. I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, and, um, hopefully this is a short-term thing we have to go through, but allow them to do it. Um, but I think this is what we need to do.
And if I may answer, that was one thing that, uh, Mr. Peterson from the Coalition of Minnesota, Greater Minnesota Cities brought up as well. Um, what he'd been hearing, some of the feedback he'd gotten from the governor's office is that they, they were concerned that, um, they may not, um, they may not have the authority in it for executive order to do this. However, um, they do believe that he does. Um, and the argument that they're making is that having it go through the legislature would just take way too much time and any benefit from it would be lost, um, in the, in the interim.
Mayor?
I did text Representative Deb Keel about this last night. I got the same call that you did, Mr. President, and Deb responded right away. Well, thank you for the heads up. I will keep an eye out for that wording in any upcoming legislation. And I also texted Senator Mark Johnson, who followed up with a phone call today, and he and I discussed it. And he also is inclined to go ahead with it. He, he has the same concern that a lot of us do and, you know, how about, what is this? An expansion of availability of alcohol in and out, now off-sales all throughout your city? And, and yet, as the more we talked about it and, and how, what a unique circumstance this is, this is a temporary thing. If you read the last word of this recommendation, it would only be allowed until the emergency order that restricts bars and restaurants to be closed has been lifted or is directed by further emergency order. We're not trying to create a new, a new process for our city. This is back to, again, trying to make sure that our businesses can keep their doors open, ride through this lull, come back to the other side. And, um, I think in the end, talking to Senator Johnson, he was in agreement that it's a unique time and this is an appropriate step to take.
Anybody else have any comments at this time?
Uh, the only other thing that was also mentioned is the governor would actually, if he did say yes to it, it would come back to the local jurisdictions where we could decide whether we wanted to do it or not. In our case, I, I think would be, uh, only fair to our businesses to do it.
Anybody else have anything?
Hello, one comment, Mr. President. Um, just, uh, I'm in favor of doing this. Uh, just one thing in the language of the resolution. I think we should make note that there is a competitiveness portion of this with Grand Forks being able to do that. We want to make sure that our businesses are, um, competitive. And I guess I would add, I would appreciate if we could maybe put together, staff could put together a resolution, um, uh, similar to what they're doing in, uh, Washington County with the email that you sent out, um, something we could forward to the state and to Polk County to potentially, uh, work on residential property tax extension as well.
Anybody else have anything on this?
I agree with, I agree with what Mr. Walter, uh, governor said about, we get, we've got to give our, our businesses a, a chance to battle with the Grand Forks side. Now that the bridge is going to open up shortly, um, that's just going to give them another, another opportunity to pick up on some more people coming across.
Anybody else?
I guess my only?
Mr. Holmes?
My only question is, is what is this going to do to the off-sale stores that are? Are we going to affect them at all by doing this? The two, the couple that's in town?
I think these are, these are the beverages someone might have drank with their meal, right? You ordered a sandwich and you had a beverage. I think that's what this is directed toward.
Anybody else have anything?
I think what a great, what a great community we have, East Grand Forks, Grand Forks. We're waiting for the Point Bridge to open up and things to get normal again, if you guys can. I'm one of them.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, Mark, this, and Mark Demers, quick one thing. Um, wondering if it's possible to send out, uh, or get the video feed for the flood meeting, even though it's winding down? And then, I guess, the policy group meeting as they're happening?
We're not on video for the policy. This is, it's just a conference call. Anybody else have anything?
Love it, Mark.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I do.
Oobai Grassil, second by Demers?
Johnson.
Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.